How would you explain that to me?
You know, I get it.
Yeah. Well, a friend of mine, he had just bought a new truck.
I'll just make the official announcement. It is five o'clock. However, we are still waiting on a couple of people to show up so we can have a quorum. So we'll kind of hold off for 10 minutes and then again. Maybe their ship will come in.
You could proceed without a quorum. This is study session. You're not going to do any voting. We definitely need one or two, one of the two in order to, at six o'clock. And we're going to make some phone calls and see what they're.
Okay. Let's go ahead and take five minutes anyway. Then maybe.
That's your discretion. That's fine.
Like I said, Van Buren and Garret is, um, it's getting pretty interesting. So they're probably on their way.
Mm-hmm. That's what my mom would say to me. Tulsa's had an inch. I remember why I was asking is Arkansas Rivers closed until at least June 1st? And we have like four barges on water that are stuck. And I'm like, need to pay.
I'm wondering how many folks are coming here.
I'm looking.
You know, finalize recommendations and we can't do that. So you still have to have a number.
I mean, we're here. So, and we have to stay here at least until six to be able to call later on.
Yeah.
He may be.
We know.
And on where he's coming from. So.
Yeah.
I'm right here.
We'll have to get David in a minute.
Okay. Very good. That's all I. Okay. Well, we've not gotten ahold of Eddie.
Yeah, he sent us saying last week. Like currently.
Thank you. Hi.
Okay. Okay. So, um, I'm going to call this special study session here to order. Obviously, we do not have a quorum, so we will not actually go with two as discussing all of finalizing and making recommendations. I think we go ahead and discuss with those who have donned their water wings and came out tonight. And we'll go from there. So. We just won't take any official action, make any recommendations tonight.
There really won't be any minutes. I think it would just show we didn't have a quorum, so therefore we didn't have a study session.
Okay.
But it would be helpful.
And that's, and that's fine.
We're just talking or killing time until six, basically. Um, one of the things that I noted is I thought that you guys had perhaps come to a determination about industrially zoned property? That maybe, maybe the addition, new development, redevelopment and infill on industrial property was maybe not something that you wanted to support anymore? Just from the notes of previous meetings? And then, um, what I know you guys are considering is indicating that additions on properties used or zoned as commercial, if the addition exceeds 5,000 square feet or one-third of the gross floor area of the existing building or use, would be those that would trigger sidewalks parallel to the street. But anything less than that might not trigger, was one of the thoughts. I don't know if it, you know, how many of you agree with that? But that was a discussion point, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think for the first part, I'm definitely on board with that. My only concern would be is having, are there any industrial properties that sit, you know, that have been rezoned or have been zoned? That sit adjacent to or in the midst of residential or commercial property? That would be the only thing. So as long as they don't sit in a residential or a commercial area, I'm fine with exempting industrial.
So that'd be like on Chestnut.
Based on, yeah, based on my knowledge, um, most of your industrial, I'd say 80% of it is going to be in that northeast quadrant of town. Just like we have an application here in the 4,800 block of East Willow. There's three houses in the mile. One of them is adjacent to this and is owned by the same guy. There's, there's no pedestrian traffic out there. Enid Energy Center. There is a small pocket around Fourth and Chestnut. Probably not going to see a lot of new development there. There are little bits and pieces here and there, things that were done years and years ago before we stopped doing spot zoning. There's a little around the city service center. So as far as, and industrial wants to be in that northeast part of town because they want to be away from populated areas. So you might have some on the fringe, 26, 28, 2900 block. Chestnut up around the old refinery, there may be some up in there. One piece just got turned into a, like a park. The gentleman town, they do, uh, oh, what's a paintball? And they do different, it's for activities like that. They're not going to, it's not feasible for all these little tiny lots that somehow slipped through the crack 50, 60 years ago. I don't think you're going to see a lot of that. So is there, is there industrial adjacent to some residential? There is.
Sure, it has to be, yeah.
But everybody's going to build out there. That's, that's where the industrial wants to be. That's where that's going, so.
Well, we have no more than that and most of it's not going to be redeveloped. That's something that if you really identified a need, you'd say that was something on the city to prioritize.
That we're going to put in that particular area.
And a lot of it is also, a lot of it is also adjacent to railroad tracks and easements, which is just a function from years gone by. Nobody's going to build a house near those or anything. So, um, you may one of these days catch that gaucha, but just can't foresee every scenario.
I think for the purposes of streamlining the expectations that the industrial users are going to have, you know, in that way they're not getting told five different things. That recommendation makes a lot of sense, so.
Well, just to clarify, the developers are told one thing now that they have to do a sidewalk. I just, I want to make sure I didn't misunderstand. Then they come to this body and they tell them something, but then they go to the commission and they tell them something. And so when we change something, what would, I guess to clarify for staff, we need to know what recommendations to take to the commission. And the commission needs to fix the ordinance the way they want it and staff will execute that. If we have something that's considered ambiguous, that's not helpful to staff. So, so a lot of the stuff I'm looking through the notes looked really good. So when we talked to Chris about the study session, we thought maybe this might be the last one to get it. So that we could go to commission where I know Jonathan will be a champion and all of you will be too on your recommendations. And I bet you will pass something new. A seventh iteration.
I think we would all concur that we don't need sidewalks in industrial areas.
Is the term floor space as opposed to a dollar amount or something of that nature, percentage cost of structure makes sense? Yeah. Cause the, the other one that was mentioned was either 5,000 square foot affected or a third of the floor space. So that would avoid causing, you know, like addition of fire sprinklers. You know, like that, that kind of thing wouldn't trigger it even though it would probably be fairly expensive. So that's good because you don't want to hinder somebody from coming up to code.
Triggered the Swadleys. At 1.2 million dollars.
Well, the thing about the Swadleys is we want to, you know, we want to get angry with them. They spent, they spent a lot of money on that building that hadn't been, that thing hadn't had any money spent on it since the early 90s. The alternative is to have places like Pizza Hut, which is just not sitting there, it's sitting there doing nothing. It's being dark. And so I hate to, I really hate to say, well, you're going to address 25 years worth of deferred maintenance and change colors and do fancy things and do a sidewalk. I think if we concentrate on making the site plan and the sidewalk ordinance match, just like Gerald said, they go here, get one answer, come here, get another answer, may get another answer at the, at the commission. And certainly, you know, code permitting, they have to do what, what, what they're instructed to do by what we give them. So that was the consideration there. Then we turn around and we give variance to Jiffy Trips, so.
The only reason that one was granted was because of the Swadleys, the El Patio, the Honda.
That was on their application.
The thing and the, and the reason why I voted against that one versus Swadleys. Swadleys, we had an existing building other than 110 square feet and some fancy gee gaws in the parking lot. It's essentially the same structure. Yes, inside it's been remodeled and it's different, but essentially the overall structure is the same. The use is the same restaurant to restaurant. Whereas Jiffy Trips, we're going from trees and grass to a brand new building.
Still doesn't change anything if you, you, somebody puts a new building in and that's the only thing that has sidewalks and all the existing don't ever get sidewalks, then this sidewalk is useless. You just, sidewalk to be doing sidewalk. So it's, you can't, the only way to not have a sidewalk to nowhere is to, is to infill, to have them when there, when there is use or when there is construction. So I mean, I, I think it's.
I think it'll be easier with the movie theater coming in because there are sidewalks in the area.
There's not sidewalks within that particular, La Homme Courts doesn't have any sidewalks.
Right, but they're going to be the entire La Homme Courts.
We've already got a spot that's 22 feet from connecting to the trail with a new, with a new sidewalk. And so, um, some of us that were curious did a little math based on the, if we go back to the fee, the $60 fee, if we use that figure, this came in effect, what was it, seven or eight years ago? You guys can correct me.
Seven or eight, but it was several years ago.
And so if, if you figure 5,208 feet multiplied by $60 a foot, divide that out over eight years, that's just a little under $40,000. If the city had started then and said, hey, let's budget, let's find $50,000 in our budget to just start doing this one bite at a time, then we'd already have a mile sidewalks. That may be here or there, but maybe that's something, I know you guys just went through a big, huge budget.
It's not done yet.
No, we still have several meetings.
And so, yeah, and so maybe, maybe Jonathan could bring up, hey, why don't we, you know, why don't we kick another $100,000 for sidewalks?
Got to find $100,000 in the budget to do that.
Right.
Well, that's what, and that's, and that's what we run into, especially maybe not with Swadleys or something like that. But that's what we run into with the private sector is them saying, you know, what, what one thing do we give up in our remodel? That five and $10,000 to offset this cost? Everybody's considering the cost and, and, you know, now we've given variances, I don't know what we do from there.
Which is one of the reasons like I, focusing on what, what we're going to use as a funding mechanism and order. So I still, I still revert back to using the, using the trigger, you, uh, whatever the trigger may be, but going to a pot of money and then based on our priorities, continue to, to fill in those areas and just create a new revenue stream. Cause the problem with the city is going to be is that we've got one revenue stream and that's it. And so if we want to, if we want to create new projects, we either have to take down something else that's currently existing and people depend upon, or we create, we, we restructure this current revenue stream that, that's already in place that says, hey, look, if you're going to do construction, you're going to build a sidewalk. And as opposed to, and I know it's not palatable for some folks, but you're going to put money in this pot and we're going to set priorities annually on the areas that we're going to put in sidewalks. And the city just accomplishes sidewalks based on what we set priorities to. As opposed to just saying, hey, look, Swadleys, you got to put in a sidewalk. Swadleys, you got to pay a percentage of the price that you got to, that you're going to do construction for a pot for sidewalks. And based on our development plan, that's how we're going to do sidewalks. Thank you for your contribution and keep it moving. But.
And I would still say, and I see where you're coming from.
Sure.
And I would still say we are, our site plan process needs to match our sidewalk ordinance. In the case of Jiffy Trips, what their building was what, 9,000 feet roughly? I can't even remember now.
I think that's close, nine to 12.
Something like that. There would have been a question. The site plan says, sidewalk ordinance says, and you're going to do that.
I personally didn't think there was a question to begin. Only question was, and the only argument, valid argument that they had as to not putting in the sidewalk was, is that, well, you gave these other guys a variance. That was their, really only, their only valid argument. So whether, regardless of what their site plan was, is based on the ordinance, their property and their development triggered a sidewalk. And we gave them a pass because we've given passes before. So really the way that we correct that is holding the line. And I think, I think we solved that problem by doing that.
And I mean, it is in your purance to remove all variances and just make everybody just ram it down their throats essentially. Regardless whether they're adding on 50 feet, whether adding on 50 square feet or spending 20 bucks or whatever, just say, you're going to put them in and that's not going to be palatable.
Definitely not, but I think we've gone, we're going to an extreme when we go to that point. We're, we're not talking about that. We're saying there's, there's, there's a buffer area that you can work within to where it's not going to trigger anything. But once you cross this threshold, at that point, it's going to trigger to where now we've got, you got to create, contribute to the big pot and develop, and develop the community. And so with that being said, you know, everybody knows what the line is. You know, the only reason why it's, it's been a problem now is because our implementation of it has been essentially arbitrary. We've basically picked and choose winners in the sidewalk, you know, game. And so rather than do that, settle on it, decide it and not grant variances unless it's in cases of safety or, um, you know. Oops, sorry. You're not.
For the record, that wasn't my phone call.
Man, I just fainted.
Um, I lost my train of mind. Me too. That was my wife, everyone.
Okay. So the top of the rabbit hole, I think though was.
Yeah.
We're either going to go exactly with what the site plan triggers are, or we're going to say, this is our own version, but it needs to be presented with site plan. And then we basically tell all new construction, hey, you're going to either put in your own sidewalk or you can contribute this cost towards the overall pot to make sure that we still have funding. And then we'll need to step in and tell the city, okay, from the big pot of money, we want to look at arterial streets that we don't expect to be resurfaced within the next X years or places where we have less than, say, 100 feet to be able to connect existing sidewalks.
That's exactly.
And I think if you want them on Garrett, you ought to just go on and do an assessment district.
I don't have a problem with that.
And then, and then the city can partner with them on doing engineering and stuff. I mean, I really think that's the only way you're going to be able to make it equitable. And if somebody's already done it, great, they're done. And make them do it right now, whether their property's improved or not. Just go ahead and make them do it. I mean, really.
Regarding Still Waters ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
I just, I thought it was interesting, you know, we keep talking about having somebody find and be able to use that anywhere. But they specifically said, um, this was in 23, 356 C, the very last sentence. A fee collected under this section shall be placed in a separate ESCO account and shall not be used to, to construct a sidewalk anywhere but on the property. Is there, is there reasoning for that? I mean, did they have problems and that's why they said we need to put it in ESCO and have it only be used on this property? I mean, can, can a fee be taken and then be used someplace else? Are we?
Certainly you can segregate it and have it be used only for that sidewalk. We also, you know, like on stormwater and stuff, we segregate it as to the basins, don't we? So, um, having it be used anywhere would, is, is a more difficult legal challenge. Problem is, is if you don't develop a pot of money and then use it, you know, how long are we gonna? You know, then we've taken people's money and we're sitting there waiting for forever. I mean, the whole taking the money for the sidewalk development fee is, is, um, uh, easier if it's in a fast development time period.
It's the, it's the same thing that happened to Ronnie Valdez when he did that car, car wash. They said, put some money in the coffers and one of these days we're going to have a turn lane down Garret. And ODOT came in and did a turn lane and nobody, I don't think anybody knows where his portion of that went. Where did that money go? He never knew where it went. As far as I know from, of course, he's passed now, but conversations I had back then, um, he's like, I don't know where the money went. I put it in a fund. Nobody can answer me where it went. And so I think that's the fear and, and one of the concerns that Carol brings up in regard to that. Do we let it sit there? And, and you have a section of Garret or Van Buren or wherever you want to put it that sits there for five years, 10 years, 20 years before. I mean, how long is, how long have we been talking about redeveloping La Homme Courts? 30 years? And so how long does that stuff sit there?
That's a bit of a different situation though. Because us being able to say, okay, we're going to put a sidewalk there. We've got the funding mechanism in order to be able to make that happen is a bit different than, you know, dealing with all of the different elements that went into the, like the La Homme Courts, you know, situation. Again, if we set the priorities and we say for fiscal year 2020, we're going to develop this particular area with sidewalks. This is the money that we project to have for that, that particular area. If we can hit this number, quite frankly, the city can, you know, I don't know how we will work this, but the city can project what that fund is. And then we would refill that fund based on the projects that came in that year and, and backfill it or something along those lines. To me this, I mean, if we're, how much do we get per year when it comes to these projects anyway? What, I mean, what, what is this bringing in annually when it, for, for these sidewalks? I mean, do we know, have a number for that?
Fee in lieu of?
Uh-huh.
I don't think anybody's paid a fee in lieu of.
Well, and even.
They've all gotten a variance.
Have we, have we?
I'm sorry, I don't mean to.
So in terms of building the sidewalk, do we ever get that, what that number was, what they spent on that sidewalk? Do we know?
The number I've heard in Raleigh helped me was a $60 a linear foot. That's our number.
We can pour sidewalks today less expensive than that.
Sure, but the total amount that was spent, let's say last year in sidewalks and people who, who came under that, under that.
The 50/50 share?
Yes.
Do you know that number in Raleigh? I think you budgeted 50,000 and we spent it all. So I think that's the answer, Commissioner. You, you, as a commission, you put in 50,000 and engineering spent that.
So we're not talking about, this isn't a massive pot of money that we're talking about to be able to manage. I think the city would be able to. So we're not talking about, this isn't a massive pot of money that we're talking about to be able to manage. I think the city would be able to, I don't know.
But the question then would be, they say we made somebody pay into this fund with the intention of either we're delaying because we know there's gonna be a road project right there and we don't wanna tear up a brand new sidewalk. Or there's nothing around them and we're trying to help make that a continuous sidewalk to someplace.
Connection.
You know, the big concern I would have is if we're only going to use fifty thousand dollars as the city match, then how many years is that gonna take until you have enough contiguous properties to make it worth your time? And why didn't we just make them buy their own sidewalk?
Well, and then of course, what happens when and if ODOT does come through and work on, not just necessarily West Garrett, but another part of our highway system through here. I mean, at, at sixty dollars a foot, five hundred and, five thousand two hundred eighty feet, that's three hundred and sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. I've got a question, is, is there, is there any possibility of trying to find some grants? Or anything, um, that would, regardless of, of who's out there now, is there anything else, any other place we can go besides the city budget or the private sector where we could go look for some grants or something to get some of those dollars?
We.
Which could be added to that.
We already farmed for those dollars. We, we look for those dollars on, at least annually in order to be able to find, find those dollars in sidewalks. We've got, uh, what is her name? Um.
Stephanie.
Stephanie. Stephanie, uh, she works for the city and she looks for grants and she looks for, but again, we're looking at grants that are coming from a federal government right now that's been hung up on infrastructure that we're talking about doing for, for years now in order to be able to get a budget through. So those dollars aren't necessarily readily available. We also have CDBG that we could, that we could use in certain neighborhoods and certain instances in order to be able to do that. But then you say, okay, we'll do sidewalks, but now we're not gonna do youth program funding. Or we're not going to fund, help fund CDSA in order to be able to make sure that, you know, they fix roofs and things like that in the community. So it's always a, you know, who are we gonna rob in order to be able to put, put in sidewalks? And, you know, I know everybody's, you know, struggling right now, but in terms of, you know, the haves and the have nots, in order to be able to get something done, if we're talking about taking from grandma in order to be able to keep, you know, big dollar business over here, that's, you know, multimillion dollar corporation. I'm more apt to say, hey, look, kick in the coffer than, you know, grandma don't get a roof this year. And I, you know, I may sound anti-business by doing that, but grandma, you know?
The, the difficulty, you know, with the stormwater, if you've got a basin, then anything that's done in the, you know, um, at least if done correctly, um, helps everyone that's in that area. Um, sidewalks, if you, you know, that, that would be very hard to figure out where the, the help is. If you put in your sidewalk, but, you know, like two miles away, you got a sidewalk, that, that's, that's the difficult deal. I mean, you know. Where's the, and I, and what's the, the other thing is, what's the benefit of a tiny strip of sidewalk? Well, like, you know, you gotta see the long range. I, you know, it's, it's, it's an intractable problem.
You eat an elephant one bite at a time.
Yeah.
Is there any precedent from other communities about saying within a mile or within a given distance, that if, say, we're not making a business put in their own sidewalk, but they contribute to a fund, we can say, we have the right to use that sidewalk money anywhere within a mile or some area by that business? Um, so maybe like, we know ODOT's gonna come in and do some upgrades on sixty-four. We don't wanna touch that, but we realize that here's some really bad sidewalks, two blocks over. We could come in and fix or install new ones.
Which is using the funds immediately to do some good instead of letting it sit there.
Mm-hmm. Cause then you also get into that liability of how many light items do you wanna have of designated funds? That you're having to keep track of every single one of those separately.
Carol might need some time to research that.
Um, it, yeah, that, that, that's difficult. I mean.
Yeah.
If, if it's, um, a voluntary program, it's one thing. If it's a forced, um, that sounds like an exactment to me, um, which are not favored. Um, uh, we do have, um, assessment districts.
Now, assessment district requires a vote though, doesn't it? Fifty percent? Plus one or whatever.
Yeah.
The majority has to be in favor of it. If they are, then the whole district is required.
Right.
To do it. Neither property taxes are levied or some other mechanism is.
An example of a successful assessment is downtown Randolph between, uh, Grand and Independence on the north side. They did a street beautification there. Pavers, trees, that kind of thing. That was done by assessment and the business owners did that.
Seems like the problem may be an area that you would, they're gonna pay into the fund, but there was, would be never any intent to have a sidewalk. But something that seems like might still work would be, if you quit doing variances and you say, you've got two options. You put the sidewalk in or you pay fifty percent or sixty percent. Of what the fee would cost. You know, then they'd gladly write that check. And I've got two options and then I don't care what you do with them. Cause I'm, I'm just happy to be writing a smaller, smaller check.
And that's where it would be helpful if we're going to, if we're going to disallow variances. There's always gonna be something that comes up where a variance would make sense. One of the, and that's one of the reasons why I've been so adamant about making sure the site plan and the sidewalk ordinance. You go into Carla, she's gonna tell you how many parking spaces you need, how many trees you need, um, how far away your building has to be from the building line. I mean, whatever. I mean, obviously engineers are smarter to figure that out. But she can go in and look at that, Chris can look at that and I can look at it in two seconds and tell you whether it's right or wrong. And, and I think we've got a really good site plan process. And, and it, it, we don't have variances for trees. Very rarely do we have a parking variance, only under some really bizarre or extreme circumstances. So I, 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 I said, let's just get rid of the variances. But I don't know if that's a practical thing. And so that's, that's, I'm, I'm not trying to keep the Swadleys of the world.
It's not legal.
I'm not trying to make them an enemy. I'm not trying to, to give them a pass.
You may not grant variances, but they can apply.
We may not grant them and that's, and that's one great thing about this system we have. Is we look at the empirical data and we make decisions based on the information we have at the time. And then it goes to city council, they do the same thing. Do we always get it right? I bet we get it right quite a few times. And so that's, that's why I've been pushing, go ahead, Chris.
Um, just to back out just a little bit, I think we're all comfortable with new sidewalks and residential subdivisions. And I would offer, the reason you're comfortable with that, and even the community, because you aren't seeing variances on that.
No.
Is in the cost of the sidewalk in relationship to preparing that development to build houses is small. It, it's a, it's a light lift. Contrasted to some of the projects on West Garrett that are doing an eighty foot addition or whatever. It's a heavy lift and that's where the problem comes in. So we're good there, right? So that gives direction to us as staff. If you applied that same thought to new commercial on industrials will do sidewalks, are you okay with that? An example of that would be Jiffy Trip. I mean, they're building a brand new facility there. The sidewalk would be a light lift in their budget. Forget the fact that we granted them a variance. Okay, that's just, get away from that for a minute. But on our arterials, new commercial developments will build a sidewalk. That could be what your ordinance says. Would you be comfortable with that? It's like the residential, I'm just trying to build on success. Then, then you can talk about, well, what about the existing businesses and how do we handle them? So I'm trying to, I, I think you'd be on pretty solid ground. The only thing.
I would be in favor of that. And I would also take it one step farther, like on a Swadleys, when they put two million bucks in a facility. To me, that's no different than a new build.
But, but let's put that over here in a minute for addition, existing businesses, how you wanna do those. It's a brand new undeveloped tract of land, like Jiffy Trip, brand new, and, and it's a light lift. So I think in, when the commission originally started the sidewalk, that was their intent, you know? It's five foot wide, four inches thick, what's the big deal? Well, it is a big deal if it's a small project having to do a disproportionate heavy lift. So I'm trying to sort that out.
Another good example would be Enid Tile and Marble where they were adding on basically a lean-to to put a piece of equipment in. And the sidewalk was going to cost twice what their add-on was going.
So, so the only caveat to new commercial on in arterials is which arterials. So I would say the new Love's gas station at Forty-second and four twelve probably don't need sidewalks there. Does that make sense? I'm, I'm trying, or Fifty-Fourth, or however far east you wanna go. Probably doesn't make sense to have sidewalks there.
Oh.
And you may disagree with me, but I'm trying.
And that's one of those that like, we'll write it in now and depending upon how the development goes, at what point are we gonna come back and say, oh, you know, Walmart isn't the end of Enid. Now we're starting.
You can always change your ordinance.
That sort of thing.
But we're trying to put sidewalks where people are walking and want to walk.
Right.
And they're probably not out in northeast part of Enid, which is all wheat, okay? So you might wanna give some thought to what's that boundaries of the side, the walkable part of Enid.
Yeah.
Cause, cause we have a rural Enid and we have urban Enid. And, and in places the, the line is real crisp and obvious and other places it's kinda gray. So, so if you like that idea, hey, Matt, Eddie, come on in. That would give you some direction or a way to shape an ordinance on new commercial or new industrial or whatever, if it's in this, it's not residential.
Okay.
So then your triggers on existing is do you follow the site plan, which triggers five thousand square feet or more? Or one-third of the building or more? That would also tragle a, a sidewalk on an existing business. That's what you've been saying, Commissioner Ream.
Yes, and, and the whole, the whole thing about the dollar amount is if you have a building that needs structural improvement, that could get a little more expensive. That may be stuff that you don't see. So now how do we say, well, if Swadleys had only spent two hundred thousand dollars, we don't really feel maybe that they need a sidewalk. But since they spent two million dollars, we, who, how do you assess a value?
And the.
And that, and that.
I think you also have to hate those.
You've got the size.
But.
The size, did you say the size?
Well, I mean, there's no, there's no, the other thing is how much you spend or how much is estimated you're spending is, you know, subject to, you know, at the beginning of the project or at the end of the project. But generally, I would hope additions know whether they're going to be five thousand square feet or one-third of the gross floor area. That is more discernible at the beginning than price. As we all know from the bidding process.
Because I think you were, ran into instances where people would try to pull separate permits to get around.
Well, yeah, I think you could see, I mean, we, and, and I don't think we need to go down those rabbit holes, but I think you're right. I think you could see people take increment steps, delay, delay their thing to save whatever, or people may not.
Well, you could put it in there though as five thousand feet or a third or in a sidewalk district. If it's in a sidewalk district, there's gonna be a sidewalk there.
But you run into the same issue with, you know, we've had a lady try to put a little mini closet on the outside of her house to put in a water.
I understand, I'm not talking about houses.
Right.
I'm talking about where we want the sidewalks.
We had the same thing at Thirtieth and Chestnut where they were adding an eighty, an eight by ten office.
Yeah, that wouldn't be in a sidewalk district.
But if that happened, like say where Universal has their office, you know, that's right on Van Buren. They don't have a lot of space on that property, you know? Fortunately, that's our report, but. So I know with environmental regulations, it's done as a percentage of your replacement cost. So, you know, whether it's a remodel of an existing unit or putting something in, your trigger is if you have gotten.
And that's spent on your site. That's spent, those dollars are spent on that site.
Correct, correct. So, so you're looking at what you're doing for that project.
One layer deeper on charging on, uh, what they're doing on the inside is, is I think it's been identified, staff said, well, they may tell you one number, different number. So I may be encouraging some of our honest citizens to be less than honest and I, I, I don't really like an ordinance that does that. But deeper than that is how many remodels will just not happen because of the sidewalk ordinance. People will choose not to invest and the building becomes dark and just sits there and it becomes blight. And examples of that is in North Grand, right out of downtown Willow. You're seeing blight at its best right there. When more desirable properties become available or locations, the businesses that can relocate out of that neighborhood and the businesses are left, you know, whatever tenant they can get in there to get whatever, generate any income they can, there is no money for improvements. And when you look down, when you drive down Grand, you see that. I'm just giving you examples because I think we all do better with, with pitchers. So just be careful with that one. You, you, you could get unintended, really big unintended consequences of areas along your desirable West Garrett that you want improved, we've incentivized not to improve it because they don't wanna spend the money on a sidewalk. Just, that's, that's what I'm saying. You could replace that with a sidewalk program and you've talked about that as a group. You know, for whatever reason, we, the city commission have picked A to B and this is what we're gonna do it. And then you open up your whole toolbox of how do you pay for it? Either by permits, assessment fees, matching programs, going out and finding grants. I mean, the, the model that we did on Willow worked well. We rebuilt Willow, there came the sidewalk, again, a light lift relative to that. Um, the Broadway Trail was, was that pretty much funded by a grant in Raleigh? There was no grant dollars in that? Okay, then I, I'm glad you told me that. So that was a big project. So, so, but you have your whole toolbox of tools when you decide to, to go A to B. But then you gotta prioritize them. So one option would be not to have the existing businesses participate in the sidewalk ordinance. I, I, that's not what you've been talking about, but I'm just throw that out there as an option to you. Seems like new houses, new residential subdivisions, good.
New commercial. Industrial, so I think, I think for sure, new residential development areas.
Do, are we thinking about maybe the urban boundary suggestion that Chris drawing a, kind of a wiggly circle around the part of Enid, we want walkable? Or not?
You'd almost have to go like Garrett to Willow, Grand to Garland.
Is that more defensible, Carol, than telling people you're gonna pay into a fund and I'm gonna spend it wherever I think best as a city? Alternative is, we're gonna tell you in this area, you gotta build a sidewalk. And then I would assume that you're gonna listen to people when they say, well, but there's a stormwater thing here and we don't wanna do. Those are the things that, that we're gonna have to get into as well.
Yeah.
What I hear is saying several things, a lot of good things. What the ordinance does is it makes developers do stuff. Because if they don't do it, it probably isn't gonna happen for a long time. The same thing, as you know, Cole, if they do a development that requires a sewer line and a water line, the city, we don't have these discussions about whether there's a variance required for the sewer line, unless there's a size issue. We typically don't get into that because we tell them that the ordinance requires you to do it and they make a decision whether they do it or don't. Sometimes they decide, and we've got some that wanna go out west to Walmart that may have to make that decision, depending on what the guidances from the governing bodies. If they have to do that and loop lines, they decide whether we're gonna do that or not, or we decide whether we're gonna come to the commission and see, well, gosh, that's gonna cost a lot of money, maybe the city should do that. And that gets into the fundamental discussion that Chris has probably had with you over the years about, do we want the city to develop within the seventy-five miles we got, or do we wanna expand to eighty? And I, you know, the grandest thing.
Thirty, please, thirty.
Yeah, yeah, the grandest thing, Swadleys is a great example of redevelopment that's perfect, but it's expensive. And so I didn't understand that probably as well until recently, that to get people to do it, they've gotta spend more money than they normally would and they don't like to do that. Now, in the case of Swadleys, I heard the guy say, I heard Brent Swadley say himself, that despite the issues out west of Walmart, they're glad they did it where they did it. In fact, it's a better location. But if they did that, but, but if they looked at the cost that they thought they were gonna have, they might not have done it at the time, but they'd already committed and they did it. So I'm glad they did. La Homacaords. La Homme Courts hopefully is going to be another good example of, whatever happens to the Kmart building in the future is another great example. But what I would like to see you do is figure out what you want the developers to do. And if it's nothing, okay, well, come tell the commission nothing. And on the fee where the city helps participate, I'm all for that. If we figure out a way to fund that more and make it a 50/50 approach, we would have to change the intent of that, which now is basically where developers aren't required to do it or homeowners or owners, we participate. If they're required to do it, why would we participate with money? You're required to do it. So that's the two distinctions I, I see in this. On one hand, you have developers do something, they, whatever the trigger, whatever that trigger is, whether it's site plan or wherever, that's what I think.
I would add the boundary, currently, the sidewalk is citywide, and that's why we have on the extreme peripheries of Enid, people, I don't, there's nobody walking out here. So if you come in and define a boundary, then it alerts the development community, they know where the boundary is, and so the expectation is we're going to do sidewalks in that area, whatever you define that. I think would be a step in the right direction in the ordinance. Instead of just citywide, whenever anybody does something, they're going to build their piece of the, and someday it'll all knit together. I, I don't think that's true. Sidewalks don't last forever. Maybe by the time that connection finally happens, whatever, somebody built 30 years ago is now crumbled. So, I mean, it's a bit flawed, that concept that eventually it'll knit together. Projects are probably the best because then you defined A to B, and you just go knock them down, and poof, there it is. And you, and you get the success, too, of doing that. The challenge then is just deciding, well, what's the first priority? But we have leadership to determine that.
And we're getting close, and we've got some targeted.
I think you've given us a lot of good feedback. I'm thinking with the feedback that I'm just seeing that's on this agenda, plus what you've given us today, we could probably formulate your thoughts and bring them back, maybe at the next regular meeting for you to take action and say, these are our recommendations to the commission. If you don't like exactly what we have, based on that, you can change it then, too. And then I'm sure the commission's going to put some debate and thought into it. And I know that whatever iteration we come out, this time it'll be almost right.
Question on your existing facilities, you know, where we didn't put sidewalks or didn't make them do sidewalks, well, like the new motels, for some reason, they don't have sidewalks. Can you start assessing a fee for people along areas and have it paid over time, then the city build it?
I believe we could. Carol can speak more to that, but it would require that wherever that assessment district is, they, those owners have to get together and a majority has to want to do that, right?
Well, for an assessment district, yes.
So you can't add it as like a tax fee?
I think we could add as a tax. I mean, we've talked about a sidewalk development fee. There might be some issues with a sidewalk development fee if we don't put the sidewalk where they're paying the fee for, that's for Carol to research and.
I meant like something like a property tax, but of course, your property tax, does that go to county or does that go to part city?
If it's a property tax levied for an assessment, it would come to the city for that purpose.
Could you add an additional fee to each building permit that was just a improvement fee? And then you could use it anywhere? It's an improvement for anywhere in the city? And that way, even if the person that wasn't going to have a sidewalk but was adding on that 80 square feet for a hot water tank or whatever it happened to be, they'd pay an additional $25 on that permit whenever it was pulled. Swadleys, when they pull one, then it's going to be a million and some odd dollars. That improvement fee is going to be substantially different. That would be a pool of money, then, that the city could do a project, point A to point B.
It could be a possibility, I guess. It'd probably have to be researched, and the commission would have to set a fee for that. One of our challenges, I think Jonathan alluded to earlier, was improvements, there's so many improvements the city needs to make.
Yeah.
If we call it improvement fee, it would probably be difficult to spend that for sidewalks when we have street improvements, water line improvements, and so, I don't know. It's probably possible. We have to do some more research on that. So we, Carol.
So not to cut it off, our normal meeting starts here very soon.
Yeah, and people are showing up.
I, for one, would like to visit the facilities here in the building.
Are you adjourned?
Adjourned.
Thank you for joining us for the Enid Metropolitan Area Planning Commission meeting. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel 12 and in high-definition, channel 112. In addition, this meeting is live-streamed on the web at enidtv.org. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the City of Enid website at enid.org.